What I do now. He didn't come back yet. Oh, did you? I haven't seen mine for a long time.
We'll call tonight's meeting the Lloyd City Council for order. Mind everyone to silence their cell phone. Manny, which state of rural call, please?
Kent Miller.
Here.
Bob Richard.
Here.
Matt Hotty.
Here.
Rick Brown.
Yep.
Tony Gamear.
Here.
Robert Peterson.
Yep.
Lloyd Latrell.
President. Thank you. If you'd stand with me for the indication, that's my pleasure. Heavenly Father, be with us tonight as we again conduct the biddy business of our community. Help us make the decisions that are good for our whole community, our city. Be with us as we move through this, we give us safety and for everyone. Be with our law enforcement, be with our soldiers and families in Tennessee that lost their loved ones. Give us the... Be with us and thank you for the moisture that we have received, in your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Peterson, do you have anything to say?
I don't have anything.
You mean what? I'm mixing it up.
That's okay, I don't have anything.
We've always done it that way. Mr. Brown?
No, no, just...
Appreciation to the city employees for helping to get all the rooms picked up around the town. Excellent job.
Thank you. Mr. Rodden?
Yeah, I'd like to take the opportunity to welcome the new business tenant, Solomone Valley Village. That all summer's character facility is in town. And also, there was a letter to the editor that listed my phone number as the one that got disconnected. I'd just like to tell Glenn that that's a mobile number, it's disconnected.
Well, there were two numbers that were actually wrong in there.
Yeah.
Well, mine's 569.
Okay, alright.
They were provided by the city?
I'm updating them until I know that it's the wrong number.
Mr. Latrell, I have nothing. Okay, thank you. Katie, do you have anything at this time?
No, thank you.
Mr. Rodden?
Uh, I do, but I'll defer the work session for most of mine. But you have Trek Engineer here in Nashville, Schwab being that Trek Engineer that talked about the water project we've been considering. So I'll turn that over to them at this time so they can show us what we're talking about. Think you might have to?
Yeah, I'll be moving.
I think you might have to.
Everybody here be okay?
Yep.
Alright. Alright guys, thanks a lot for having me here tonight. Stuart and I. It's been a while since I talked to you and wanted to let you know what I've been up to as far as the water quality and what it took on plant. What improvements we might be looking at, the potential. We've been looking at, we started out looking at a taste and odor problem. Not a problem, just periodic problems in the spring and the fall. Occasionally we have some tasty odor with... Tasty or not tasty. We have some odors related to MIB and jasmin that come out of the lake. And they have very low odor threshold, which means you can smell them, you know, at very low concentrations. MIB and jasmin are the two compounds that are created from blueberry algae. And it originates out of the lake, but it also comes out of the river runoff, terrestrial runoff. So basically what we want to do is monitor for taste and odor compounds in the spring, in the fall when they usually occur. We want to know what levels they were, what species they were. They were in the cellular level or if they were dissolved. And that's all kind of impacts how we treat it and also to what level we treat it. However, we did not see a big spike this last spring like we did last year. And that's a good thing, we want to see the elevated levels, but we also don't want to have a problem. So what we can do in this case is actually kind of look at lakes around the state. Lawrence, Clinton Lake, Kansas River, Cheney, Smithville Lake, they're all having the same kind of problem. So we can look at the elevated levels that they've had and try to protect the plant against those. So we kind of looked at, immediately we looked at, you know, what can we do at the existing plant to make it, you know, do what it can to take out these taste and odors. And I have to commend Jim Vence on his cooperation and help with coming up with some of those and actually listening to the recommendations. We're actually during these last taste and odor episodes, we're able to mitigate those. So even though we didn't see the high levels, they were there and the plant took completely all of them out of there. That doesn't mean that they can do it when they're up around, say, 100 parts per trillion versus 10. So we looked at the DPP challenges. The DPP stands for disinfection byproducts. These last couple of rounds of sampling, we actually have had elevated levels of disinfection byproducts. Primarily trihalamethanes. And those trihalamethanes are caused from chlorine and natural organic matter combined in the water. It creates a suspected carcinogen. And then under the Safe Drinking Water Act, they've just reduced the allowable maximum contaminant level. So when we used to be meeting those, now we're just right on the borderline. So when we started looking at taste and odor, we want to incorporate this challenge as well, make sure we knock that out. We evaluated moving the coordination point down. And what that involved, what the reason we do that is, like I say, these THMs are created when this natural organic matter in the water combines with chlorine. What we want to do is chlorine down in the process as far as we can. And so we don't want, we want coordination, you have to have disinfection credit, you have to have disinfection time in the water. But you don't want to have so much of it that, you know, you create these problems. So when we enter here, we kind of conducted some ozone testing. We looked at ozone as a disinfectant, we looked at UV and peroxide. We looked at the optimum dose of activated carbon, which you right now are adding powder activated carbon. We just want to make sure they're using the right time. And it gets to the point where you're adding so much of it, it tips the scale to adding ozone and ozone facilities. So that's kind of what we've been looking at, we're looking at ozone, looking at how much ozone we would have to add to get the disinfection credit. If we move chlorine down and we're using ozone, we want to make sure we're getting the same credit and meeting EPA or KDAQ regulations. And then we're also currently testing for chlorine dioxide, which is another strong oxidant that will remove taste and odors and natural organic matter in the water. We're also evaluating membranes. Membranes are, are, you're familiar with RLO, it's kind of a form of RL. Basically pushing water through a small membrane and rejecting all material behind it. So what are we going to do from here? We're going to take our, we're going to take the white water and spike it now with the taste and odor compounds at the levels that we're anticipating that we're going to see. And in that way, we can determine how much of these chemicals and which treatment scheme works the best. So at the same time, we're not just looking at taste and odor, now we're looking at this disinfection byproducts. We're also looking at making sure we have adequate disinfection contact time. So really, we're looking at three different things along with the total of antiviral. And we want to come up with a treatment scheme that's going to take care of all these things simultaneously and inexpensively. Also, we look at membranes, we're going to continue to look at ultrafiltration and nanofiltration. Nanofiltration is a step down from reverse osmosis. Ultrafiltration is another step down. So then we'll keep on, we'll look at this, moving this point of coordination downstream. This may help, you know, in the interim with the disinfection byproduct issue. And we'll complete the report with the final recommendations and fire to any design or should use some biotesting to make sure we have the optimal treatment scheme. And if everything signs correctly. And in that vein, we kind of are, we kind of want to let you know what we're looking at preliminarily here as far as what your options might be as far as making improvements. We have four scenarios here and these kind of came out of your retreat, this is kind of what you wanted to look at. So these are kind of your options. Look at modifying the existing plant just to meet the immediate need for taste and odor and disinfection byproducts. And then the next from that would be upgrading this plant to get you additional capacity and to meet future regulations. And then finally, we're looking at constructing a new facility to treat river water and a new facility to treat lake water. And basically for each one of these, the first one, we're not looking at expanded capacity. But just for comparison purposes, the remaining three, we're looking at three MGD. Current capacity is one and a half MGD. And that would keep our options open for consolidating water districts and other users and having additional water available if somebody would come into town and need a lot.
And for reference, the city routinely runs in the, I didn't study the numbers coming in, but what, 800,000 to a million gallons per day on average? And then peak days are up in the 1.3 MGD range. So we're close to capacity of the existing plant, but we're not at capacity right now. The thing that needs to be thought about when we're talking about plant capacity is whether or not, whether or not anybody can see into their crystal ball and determine or have a good idea in their mind as to whether a large industrial user might be coming to town or whether one of the Mitchell County Rural Water Districts would want to connect into the city of Lloyd or something like that. But I want to make sure that people don't misunderstand that we're at our maximum capacity right this minute. In my opinion, that's not the case.
Okay, so this first option, we'd be looking at, I think the best treatment technique right now from what I've seen is using ozone for an oxidant after clarification. But I also want to make sure that we have the ability to add it in this preset basin. So just so, just to walk you through the process, raw water comes from the river, comes in the preset basin, we're basically knocked down in the solids. Then we go through, add lime to remove hardness and also coagulate so that we can hook the particles together so they settle out. And also an oxidant to remove TOC. And your TOC removal is very, very good right now, so I just want to commend you on that one. This treatment technology was, you know, kind of designed to have settling over a long period of time, like hours. So the theory is you give it enough time to settle for normal particles to settle out over a long period of time. It's kind of old technology, but it's tried and true. And then in here, we add CO2 and then chlorine's added here. Chlorine's added here to get disinfection contact time. But you have like, you have a long time in here, so you have an opportunity. If there's any organic matter still in the water, you're going to be combining with chlorine, forming THMs right at the spot. So what ideally, you know, what flows through here goes through the filters. We'd really like to move the point of chlorination to after the filters. So in this scenario, we're looking at covering the basins and adding ozone in these basins. And this figure over here kind of shows that you need to baffle it so that you can have different cells with those ozone so they have a residual. And also you have good contact time with organics. So you cover the basin, put in the baffles, add your ozone injection points, analyzers. And this kind of shows you what a little room of ozone feed equipment might look like. Generator, chiller, ozone concentrator, various items. And that's what this little square is showing you here. So you're looking at ozone facilities to be able to feed into this basin that's been converted to an ozone contact basin. And you also have the ability to add here when your turbidity is not high, so you can also reduce organics. And following that, you would, really this basin here is not needed, there's a bypass line in there. And you run over here and what we do here is add granular activated carbon to the top of the filters. And you need about 24 inches in there. And what this does, it allows you, since we moved the chlorine down here, allows you to go with, this becomes a biologically active filter at this point. And when ozone reacts with organics, it creates a smaller, what they call an assimable or a biodegradable organic carbon. So that any microbes, the future of water treatment is a biological treatment. And so the microbes that, naturally occurring bacteria that grow in this GAC eats, basically consumes that biodegradable organic carbon. So you get complete removal of organics at that point. So that when you do add chlorine, you're not forming these disinfecting byproducts. So that's kind of, that's kind of that option. Get to the nitty gritty, that looks like, you know, one and a half to two million dollars worth of investment just to get, just to get you through the, get you through that. It is the lowest cost option, buys you time, it doesn't replace equipment at that cost, although it could do that. So that's kind of that first option. Next option is, gets a little more involved. And what this one involves, expanding the existing capacity of the plant as well as improving treatment capacity, capability. So as you can imagine, we have to keep water flowing through the plant. So this is kind of the thinking that you have to go through when you're looking at these kind of projects. So over here on the right, you can see this would be is a high rate treatment unit. Basically does the same thing as this, almost double the capacity in the same footprint. So what you do is you would install this equipment, you'd end up in running. And you'd also need a high rate, you'd also need live silo because you've got to keep the live silo dedicated to this treatment while you're building this. And this facility would be up higher than the rest of this anyway. And then we'd be adding CO2. So what we have is lime addition, clarification, everything that happens in here would happen here. And then you would add CO2, connect to a bypass line that runs through here. Then you have, then you'd be able to take this whole side down and kind of, and then it's acting like it used to with these clarifiers and flexible that. And then the next step would be to add your ozone contact chamber, similar to what I talked about earlier with the baffles and the cover. And then we'd add over here, since we're kind of, we've got a couple of options here. We can look at these membranes that I talked about. With the small pores, basically pushing water through a small membrane, rejecting everything behind it. And what these are, are basically, these little modules sit right down in an existing filter. And you filter, filter, but you have three of them in there, so you can replace one at a time. And two, you could get two of these filled and have double the capacity of the old three gravity filters. So that's one option. Another option is to just come out here and put a new bank of filters in, even though you got piping out here. That's another possibility. And then, and then the other possibility is to put submerged membranes in the water here or build a deck and put the membranes on top. They would have modules that look like this. And this would be a state-of-the-art plant, you know, in the old footprint. And coming out of membranes, of course, you'd have to add chlorine coming out the moon, you have to go in this clear well here. That, oh, I mentioned, I should mention that this, this is kind of the same concept as this. It relies on long detention time through a big wide open body of water. You can add these tube settlers at the end and actually push a lot more water through and settle out a lot more solids. And it's basically a bunch of inclined tubes. And the particle hits the top of the tube and the way has to settle an inch and then the rest of it settles out. So it settles things out a lot quicker. That option, you're looking at four and a half to five million dollars. But you get increased capacity, it's a lot more forgiving than the existing plant. It can take turbidity spikes almost without the preset basin. Many of the old components could be replaced, just as part of the process. Of course, as you can imagine, disadvantages, there's a lot of design and construction challenges. Wherever that clarifier is, there are a bunch of sludge lines and it's kind of a nightmare, but it can be done.
And it should also be noted that this option two would take the water treatment plant from approximately 1.5 million gallons per day to 3 million gallons per day. So double the capacity.
Once you get to about two MGD, it's not that much more to add additional MGD to the design, cost-wise. The third one is a new water treatment facility using just a river water source. Cost is in the seven to nine million dollar range. We still do softening, ozone disinfection, the GSC that I talked about, and dwarf membrane filtration. It would be all included. Maybe able to utilize some of the existing components. You would be able to, the raw water intake, given that we put the plant close to this one. Could use preset basins as well, clear well sliders and sludge handling equipment. Disadvantages are, we still have the same old story of turbidity fluctuations and variable water quality. And finally, the option, the last option is bringing in lake water, flooded elder, the cost of eight to 11 million dollars. Six mile, 11 mile high bar. This, this would allow you to, basically the best water source that was around here. It's consistent water quality. You don't have a need for preset settling, the water's that consistently clear, basically. Compared to the water, it's not clear, but it is compared to it. It's well suited for membrane filtration. And one thing nice about having a pipeline from the lake is if you do have an outbreak or if you have atrazine in the water or something like that, you can add chemicals to take care of it as it's kind of flowing. So that is, that is an advantage, it's going to cost a little bit more. And then you can use conventional clarifiers. What that means is that when I was talking about the river water source, since it fluctuates so much, I would highly recommend putting in hybrid clarifiers, but they're a little more expensive.
What happens if Le Conde Lake had this closed down for a blueberry algae outbreak, like the difficult upwell? Does that put us in a bad way for doing red water?
It could, I mean, it depends on, a lot of blueberry algae is at the surface. And in your case, this little tape is down, quite a ways down below the surface of the water. So blueberry algae likes to float on the top, so you'd be protected against that somewhere, not completely. But blueberry algae is eventually going to find its way into the river.
And what about the new?
Problem they got with zebra mussels?
Yeah, well, the, the studies that have been done on zebra mussels, they're, they actually are clearing up the water, making it work. Because they like the, they like to give the, basically the beneficial algae, if you will, because it's kind of the base of the food chain. Small organisms eat that. Well, they're in competition now with zebra mussels, but zebra mussels do not like blueberry algae. So they clear up the water and they spit out the blueberry algae, so to speak. And so it's favorable growing conditions for blueberry algae. So they tend to be making it worse. That's just research that I've...
Put the zebra mussels down that low?
Yeah, yeah.
So they get there, plug up the intake?
They like it where there's moving water, so they get right into pipeline that's just leaving. And they just kind of build on each other and they'll throw the whole pipeline down. They like the fresh flow of water. That's why they go the intakes and pipelines and things like that. And I'd like to say you're kind of protected in the river against zebra mussels, but don't like it. It's rather in a turbid environment like that, but it's not guaranteed. Yeah, zebra mussels are here to stay.
Right, whether they're here today or not, they'll be here tomorrow.
Yeah, and that's why I would caution anybody saying, well, the lake's getting clearer, so we're not going to have this problem anymore. Well, it actually could be compounded. That's really what I wanted to present to you guys. Any more questions?
So being on the river, if we have a blueberry algae outbreak at the lake, is some of that less than as it goes up the river? Or is it just as bad for us downstream as it is if we were getting it from the lake?
I'm sorry, but?
If, if we have a blueberry algae outbreak at the lake and we're on the river, are we, do we have any protective benefits from being on the river? Or is it just same water, still just as?
That's a good question. And that's typically, if it's in the lake, it'll find its way to the river eventually. But they can, certainly both places. But you can imagine, I mean, this water can penetrate, or somewhat can penetrate the water, it's going to come in more. So in a river, you're going to be more disturbed, so it's not going to penetrate the water. But if it's in the lake, it's going to get to the river eventually.
One of the core questions that at least I have in the development of the report for this study is whether or not the city wants us to focus on additional capacity for the plant for the future, for future industrial connections or future real water district connections. Because there's a huge cost component to building a new plant or even a capacity upgrade at the existing plant. Because the taste and odor concerns and the THMs, the trihalamethane issues can be solved with a substantial amount less investment, but it does nothing for capacity of the plant.
I think as we move forward, if we're going to do something, we need to think about capacity down the road. Because we're going to be getting a lot of money out, we've got to think about the future and the water needs. And maybe they can service the rural water districts if they so need it. If another wants to come on board, maybe do a better job with the one that we have. I think capacity's important.
Is the water rights an issue?
That's a good question, and that question has been asked at DWR. And when asked, they said that there is very little precedence for moving the point of diversion like what we're talking. Now, one question that I had at your council retreat was, if we move the point of diversion for like, say, your vested right, would the right remain intact for your current point of diversion? And the answer to that is, as long as your diversion works, the intake is maintained in a suitable and operable condition, your water right would remain intact for that. My belief is that through the powers that be, we could get the points of diversion moved to the lake if that is deemed the most appropriate. If we are going to either upgrade the existing plant at the current location or we're going to build a new plant without a water line from the lake, there wouldn't be any change to your water rights. And do we have sufficient water rights? The answer is yes. The answer is yes.
So, changing the diversion point by 11 miles, not going to change the date of right?
Correct. Now, obviously, we will confirm if the decision is made to move that direction. I mean, that'd be the...
In the past, I think my understanding was if you wanted to move to diversion point, you had to actually apply for new rights.
Right, and I understand what you're saying. We do have different water commissioner sitting now, and his belief is that that's not the case. He thinks we could move that point of diversion because it's an advantage to... There would be benefits to lots of people in doing that. There'd be very little benefit.